To the flag of the United States of America. Truly repolled for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the rule of liberty and justice for all.
Oh, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Call the meetings order. Uh, do you have a quorum? Let's take approval of the agenda in the minutes, please.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carry. County engineer, Rich Dome.
How are you guys?
Good.
Good. Couple of things, our asphalt projects have been started, they started milling last week before the fourth there. They're coming from Mitchell County to Grafton and turn around and go back. That'll be the milling there. They're probably about a week, week and a half out yet before they pave it um on that one. Then they're a little bit further behind yet on the south of Manly and the Joyce project, but they're doing a bunch of projects right now that high-performance mix, so they're trying to get all that stuff, all that work done first, and then they'll come in and do the other, I guess, the normal mixed stuff that's south of Manly and and uh or in fertile, sorry, not Joyce.
I was gonna say, I was gonna ask you about.
Why they keep saying? No, anyway, there's that um, we had a few uh, I don't know, four or six pop-ups this week from the heat. Um, and I would think that with all the heat we've had, they'd be done, but they're still finding ways to come up. Um, and then we've got some cracked ceiling coming up maybe in the next week or so. Just some small spots, just gonna do that out by the interstate where we overlaid that asphalt, just to kind of, we knew that was gonna reflect back through on the concrete. They were gonna get that sealed up so that uh um by, I think, early August, they're gonna come and do that epoxy paint out there. So I wanted to get the joint sealant down first, so we're not putting epoxy over that expensive paint. So I think the timing will work out really well there, so um. Other than that, that's all I've got for you. I will have uh, we're hiring a mower operator. I'll get you guys a uh payroll sheet. Um, Chuck Hengstedt's gonna run the mower for us for fifteen bucks an hour, just to give you a heads up so that we can get that rolling too, so. Um, and then I don't know if you've got any questions for me on secondary roads. Otherwise, I can give you some things that I've had some phone calls over the last week on some drainage stuff that I kind of got put on the agenda, used to look at.
Is everybody doing a rock round or they just, were they just doing that on Northwood or Martin Marietta here or?
Um, depends on how the trucking goes. I know Martin Marietta started first. Um, we ran them out of rock out of Northwood here, so another point about amazing city. They knew they were gonna be close with having enough. So they'll get theirs done, and I think uh, I haven't talked to Basic, they're usually right on top again going to, but I don't, I haven't talked to anybody else about that. I just knew Martin Marietta was running so far. I know they've all got the green light to go ahead and put rock down. I just haven't talked to the foreman in the last few days on whether that the other ones have started yet.
Okay.
On the on the drainage side of things, I guess we have a couple of things that I had Jackie put on the agenda. I had a call from Terry Johnson. So that's the individual that was uh inquiring about some spray over there on on the east side of the county, south of one oh five over by gra- over by Carpenter. He was talking about wanting the ditch cleaned, and I didn't get a I haven't been out there to look at it. It was on uh Thursday, I think, when he called back, and uh it seems like he needs it cleaned from from either the bridge or just south of the bridge going north on that ditch, but I don't have an exact idea of how far he wanted to go. He just says it seems to need to flow better. So I'm not quite sure. When he was talking about the spraying out there, he said he couldn't smell the spray, and I'm like, well, I guess I don't know whether you wanna be sniffing the spray or not. So uh, there's a request for a ditch clean on that. Um. Also, there was one on uh, what was the other one I had there? There's a
The crossing?
Yeah. Know you with that one. Have you guys had discussions on that one?
On West, right?
Yeah, we came in.
They don't have access, but we want it that way and HSP is the one, um, it's up Truman.
No, Truman, Hengstedt.
Hengstedt. And it's an old bridge crossing and it doesn't work. It was CRP ground, but now they want to be able to get through, and it's like that's a nice crossing, and that's on them.
Yeah. Both sides are washed out, and I don't think he, I think what he indicated to me, the pilings were not bad, or were not good. So I guess he wanted me to talk to you guys. I guess I didn't understand. I thought maybe you guys had talked about this one in the past, but I wasn't quite sure what you guys had decided, whether it's their responsibility or not.
Oh, yes, it is.
Okay.
They could still, to me, they can work and negotiate with the Kerry Paulsons and actually do the east side of that ditch and get a right away and build a road all the way out there instead of, you know, pay Paulson, either buy some land right away or easement and go out that way instead of put the money into a bridge. There might be money, yeah, huh?
Cause he was the one that had
Yeah.
the pulver pipes he wanted to put in there, right?
No.
No, that's uh Gary Chiller.
Chiller, okay.
That's a different, probably a different area. You might have
Yeah, I was here, cause no, I was involved, I was trying to figure it out.
We looked at it on the screen and see what he's talking about there.
Yeah, it's because Kurt Paulson is here.
Yeah, the families with her.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I guess, but I can
Who thought we left it up to them, didn't we?
It is up to them.
It is up to them, but they could, to me, could negotiate with Paulsons.
Well, I think they were more curious as to who was gonna pay for, you know, if they had to fix the bridge or what they needed to do there, who was gonna take care of the costs.
They do.
They do.
Okay.
Private.
It's private.
All right. Um, and then I had a call from, I know this wasn't on the agenda, I didn't get it, I got it late on Thursday. Um, Sam Vanashek called on DD over in Deer Creek, and I can get a better idea. I know it's just west of his place, or is it east, I'm sorry. It's a mile east of his place, there's a T intersection, the water comes in at a T, and then just south of that T, there's a big scour hole. He was out um running that right away a little bit, and it was washed out, so I don't know, we'll put a work order together and see if somebody can go out and fill that in, or however you guys wanna handle that, but.
Does it continue to happen? Do we need to rip wrap it, or is it just?
I, I guess I don't know. To me, when I looked at the aerial footage, and looked at aerial photography, there would, it seems like it does it seems like that certain area that he might be talking about is wider than normal anyway, so it must scour anyway. But I think he hadn't been out there for a while. It looks like it might have been worse. So I guess I don't know. It's not, it's not right at the T, it's coming south, so I don't know when that water comes in and the other stuff goes south, if it just swirls further further south of there, if it's more turbulent than where it intersects, but um at any, there's some fill that needs to be put back in there and get worked on, so. What may happen is uh, I'll have to get a work order put together, get a con- maybe get a contractor, if you guys wanna do that, or if I do um just to get it going and then bill it back to the district, I guess, cause it's gonna need to be filled. Said it's with the all grass, it's hard to find.
Sam, Sam own that, or is he the tenant?
You know, I guess I'm not quite sure if he owns it or farms it. I'd have to look back at the map again, I don't recall.
Well, Stuffer got a lot of stuff on the east side. Sam would own the west, and then it goes down.
Well, and it'll be the west side that's scoured.
Three ditches, the main, the main channel of ditches goes west, and south is another ditch that comes west also.
Right.
It's up the wall.
And I might be explaining it wrong, not really remembering, the water drains through there. Um, I'm gonna look here and see if he owns that ground or not. I had mentioned something about if it was that bad, maybe they could find somebody, but if there's nobody working around there. Let's see here. Well, it's his, is it his father-in-law or his uncle? It's Beakley's ground. So I'm sure he's farming it.
Yeah.
Up there. So. Anyway, I just thought to give you a heads up on that, and uh maybe we'll just throw a work order out there and see if somebody can come and get it.
Yep.
Reshaped it. I'm good.
Yeah, yeah. Um, Rich, the sheriff put a chat out there that they're taking complaints on dust over there in that Highway nine detour.
Okay.
You got any complaints on any of that, or?
I haven't gotten any, and it's the DOT's project.
Is that supposed to be done? Is that getting close, you know, or?
I haven't been out there to know. I would think by now they'd be getting pretty close.
Complete in July, I think, or there.
I knew it was gonna be at least a month-long project. Um, I'll take What's that?
She said it's almost out of the county, but it's a great couple of miles.
Yeah, two miles in.
It's just west of forty is, yeah.
Yeah.
The detour is on our
The official detour is a long way.
Locals are taking the gravel.
Yeah, they don't wanna go way up to Joyce to go around, so they're taking gravel.
Yeah.
But Dan, are you saying that it's at the intersection of nine and or it's just off, where are you at with the three, is it on three forty at the east and west then? Okay, well, I think I might know who might be calling in on that dust, but that's not the official detour, and I'll talk to the state.
Okay, yeah, just, I know they did dust control, somebody did dust control at all the properties, cause I was over there the other day, but I saw it, it just hasn't rained, and it's getting a lot of the local traffic, car traffic, but
People know the route.
Yeah.
Right. Well, and it's certainly a lot of shorter, a shorter route than taking the hard surface, but. So, well, I'll uh, I'll email the DOT and let them know we've taken complaints on dust, so.
Okay.
It's really not, not my project, so I'm gonna leave it up to them to solve it.
Yep.
One BD nineteen, do you wanna do a landowner meeting or something, or somebody needs to investigate or?
Yeah, it was probably investigate nineteen to see how far it needs to get cleaned or what he's talking.
Well, and that's just that I wasn't, you know, he was telling me what he thought needed to be cleaned, but I don't think he'd been out there, and I haven't been out there. I just thought I'd give you a heads up quick that there was a request for it.
Nineteen must be one of their spraying then too, if he was complaining about the
They, yeah, they got that sprayed, at least, you know, when he called and was questioning the spraying, it was done, it was done probably the day before or two days before he called in. And looking at nineteen just by the, the beacon here, you know, it's not as, it's not a straight, it's, it's it's been straightened in a way, but it's not perfectly straight, and the further north you go, the more windy it gets. Um, so I'm not quite sure if he, you know, from where, how far he's talking, and I can see there's probably a couple sandbars in through there, but I can't hardly believe that they're causing too much of a water problem, but then, you know. It should probably be looked at, I guess.
Yeah, looking at a little more, I guess, and then we'll see where we go from there.
Okay.
Need to do a landowner meeting and have the thing, you know, look at getting it cleaned, the whole thing cleaned or what?
Yeah, obviously, you get further, you get closer to the, to the other channel there, and there's a lot of trees and stuff in there, so. I mean, it's that wooded area north, so.
Okay. Yeah, take a peek at it, I guess, if you can, and see what you think, and we'll go from there with the landowners if we need to.
I'll see what I can get done.
Okay.
All right.
We're all good, I think. Thanks, Rich.
I'll stick around in case something comes up.
All right. Uh, is there any drainage claims?
No.
No? Regular claims?
Yes. Engineers need some money for their project again.
It's in construction, this for real, slot money stuff, looks like. Uh, special claim, one hundred sixty-nine thousand, road department.
They only need to sign the um attached up to
Make a motion to approve the claims.
Motion to approve the claims, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here now, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carry.
I think there's a stop for the owner or something to sign.
Um, Richard, yes.
Oh, maybe I take care of it. I must be thinking of I must be thinking of the um interstate stuff.
All right, uh, under Fekko.
Still working on those maps, almost done. Good. And then um I, I'm working with the Catalyst program. There's a building in work funding that maybe I'll go for next year, so. Just starting the process on that.
Do something with it?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Good option, but help them out with some money then, save me up to a hundred thousand in there. One thousand dollars matching, right? So that'll be good. Okay, anything else? Uh, Jason Petersberg.
We talked about it the last couple of meetings, uh, change order number two with one construction is for the extra work around the building there, the Boyd building for the grading. Um, they had to adjust fire hydrant, also had to relocate a light pole and the camera on it, etc. As I said, they've moved that to the building itself, or in the process of moving that to the building rather than having that light pole out there actually. Total increase in cost is five thousand dollars per the change order. There is some other work, the roadstone that'll be hauled in for putting their driveway back. We had unit prices already established for that, so there, that's already in the contract. We'd recommend approval of change order number two.
I saw a move, we approved the change order number two for the top pile, second addition.
There's a motion second, any discussion?
Did Jason sign that? I don't think I got that one.
Have you sent that one over to us at all yet, Jason?
I honestly don't believe so.
Okay.
I will send it. I'll get it to you, Jackie.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carry.
Quick update too, they're still looking to pave it next week. Everything goes good this week, they'll have the rock base down for the road. Uh, we did have some weeks upgrading some areas, so we got a plan met there late Thursday, put together a plan to address that, to get a good grade to pave on. Um, we did also put together a lighting plan, just so we got an idea of what we're looking at. Um, four lights, we're estimating about thirty-five thousand dollars is what that would cost. Um, that's using a thirty-foot tall aluminum pole. Some other projects that we've done recently, we had pricing on it, so that's what we used, concrete foundation on those. Um, so I guess, do we wanna proceed with the lighting? Do you want us? I do have a picture of that, if you want me to show you the, what we put together.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
I can't
We talked about it.
Post-disabled participant screen sharing, so.
Joel let you in, don't worry.
Try it now, Jason.
All right. Can you see that? So there's four, starting at the north, if you can see my cursor on the screen there. One at the north intersection with Wheeler Wood, uh, one at the curve, another one at the other curve, and then one up at the south intersection at Wheeler Wood. The lines around there are just, they're the foot candle measurements we put in there to see what we're gonna have for illumination levels. Uh, if we go with this route, the plan would be one trench for the primary electric. Heartland's okay with putting the secondary over the top, you know, backfill a foot, and then putting conduits in for the, the street lighting. We did check distance-wise, we can feed this with four lights from the existing lift station up there. Um, this is the fixture that we based it on, it's one that we used recently on a project in more of a commercial industrial area. It's thirty-foot tall LED with concrete foundation. Um, just more information on that. Did this to get an idea of budget where we'd be at. We are gonna have to decide if we're gonna do it here probably in the next couple of weeks because they'll, I'd say, two to three weeks, they could be in there starting on the electric for the secondary for the street lighting, or for the primary electric.
We'll do it now.
This, yeah.
All right, we gotta save on that. We could finalize the plan and get the pricing on it, firm case.
Yeah. Go for it.
Yeah.
Textures agreeable to you?
Yep, yes.
Yeah.
You want a color chart so you can pick a color, or just go straight white?
We don't need a color chart.
Good, yeah.
Go ahead and start moving forward on that, so we can uh take advantage of the cheaper option without, you know, having to trench our own line in, so.
That's what I, I would agree with that as well. That's all I had for this week. Questions?
Thank you. It's looking good.
Very good.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
All right, any reports? Payroll eligibility? Fireworks permit.
There's gotta be some, because there's lots of fireworks each other.
Uh, chief fireworks permit. Uh, July eleventh, Jason Petersberg, July eleventh, ten old family.
Make a motion to approve fireworks.
Second.
Motion on second, any other discussion? Here now, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carry. Central Iowa dual detention center, fiscal year nineteen audit.
We're just acknowledging or whatever that we received did, or what, whatever the, I didn't look back at the
I make it accepted, or he wants us to accept it. I'll make a motion, accept the audit report.
Okay.
Second.
Motion on second to accept the fiscal year nineteen audit from Central Iowa dual detention center, any discussion? Here now, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion will carry.
It was a good audit, everything was, I don't think there did, and things at all. It was one of those little stupid things you always get.
Yeah, you have to think that's something a little bit.
It was all good, so.
Good. Uh, department had discussion. Well, there's an email last week. It went out, it's a concern on with COVID stuff going up, do we need the required mask restrictions, or what do we, you know?
I don't think we have the traffic here, and the treasurer's office is still locked and taking appointments, so I, I think we're okay, but if somebody else has concerns, I guess they, they speak to.
Yeah, recorder to search out on there. Um, we're appreciative of the shields they got, and they don't see any of these people going to public, it's not that heavy traffic, and it's still doing as much as it can over the phone.
Cause I like the fact that employees can come in again, cause it
Right.
It was, I appreciate everything the sheriff's office did for us, but it's just nice wanting to be able to come back in our office again without having to worry about doors and stuff.
Yeah, I think that conversation might change a little bit once court opens up.
Yeah, I think we'll just shut our doors then, cause they still have their
Oh, why not? Me, and I don't Dan's, uh, Sutters, the finance department opened, sheriff's office is fine with it, and Dan elected the foregoes.
Yeah.
Fire for Sam's.
Always do. Um, yeah, we just don't have the traffic at this point.
Okay, I mean, we could, yeah, worst case, you'd print up these papers, put on the window, we recommend you wear masks if that needed to be, but I think everybody, it's kind of your own choice anyways, if you go out there and wanna wear a mask or don't wanna
It'd be a bare minimum to put that, do something like that.
Well, and if we did require them, then did we have to have them available for people? And, and who's gonna watch that at the
That's why you can just make it voluntary, I mean, it's just suggest, mandate it, you know, there's a lot of people that'd be following.
And I, you know. Yeah.
Do something like that.
I mean, if you guys are okay here.
It might be already, yeah, there's a picture of a mask person.
Jeff hit the highlighter on.
Yeah, circle it.
Draw that round, I mean, the other options appear to be okay, but for now, just kind of leave as is. Um, and then we'll see, uh, if this one's court start next week.
I thought it was a thirteen, but I don't know if they pushed it back, and I
Is that the pushback date?
I don't know.
First pushback?
But I don't think jury trials were at least in
So August, were they?
August or September. So I think we have time, but.
Okay, I guess we'll stay that as is for now, then, what do you guys think?
I agree.
You guys have worked here every
We're not here now.
Yeah. We're not gonna make a decision for you guys that we don't, aren't really a part of anyways, you know.
I just think as long as the treasurer's office, as they're in a different building, there's not people, well, except for the people that wander around. Wanted, yeah. Then I go, do you have an appointment? Okay, then go down that way.
I think we should probably address it till once the court opens up.
Yeah.
Cause then you guys don't have a lot of traffic.
And I think, I might shut my doors, because they don't deal with the traffic now.
Right.
On the court, on the court days, you mean, just that starts going again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just cool, you sit down on the bench and yeah, could chat, of course.
Someone would be.
Yeah.
Or just wanna know where to go, and I don't know why they can't figure it out. Yeah.
Right.
Long discussion.
Yeah.
Long discussion.
There you go.
Your building.
Anyway, yeah.
Speaking of this topic, um, do we get signs made?
Yes, I got them. Hey, did you look at the front door?
No, we got none. We usually come in the back, but we're not allowed.
I use the employee entrance, the main entrance, yeah.
Cause yeah, it, if you miss it now, there's something wrong.
Okay.
Good.
Now I just gotta get the, I gotta be nice to Russ, so if somebody will put the other signs up for us.
Yeah, I'd say, I know they probably got some posts we can use.
Now I kick myself, I wish I would have made a big sign with an arrow to the treasurer's office too.
Yeah, same time, put it on one.
Yeah.
In the same post, yeah.
I would think so, but you'd be surprised.
Could throw one on there.
Yeah.
But you probably went four or five a day sometimes.
They just don't, I don't know if they're coming from out of town, or they don't remember, or what, but yeah.
We do get a lot of out of town.
Yeah. And I ask, you know, when they're making appointments to maybe ask them if they know where it's located, so maybe that'll help.
Yes, sir.
Well, and uh, morning, this is for
Oh.
Like Richard mentioned, John Hengst.
Yeah. Cool.
I don't know why.
Uh, we'll go back to our payroll ability, uh, yeah, for road department, for a part-time lawnmower.
Second.
There's a motion second to approve payroll, John Hengst, any other discussion? Here now, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carry.
They retired, just retired from doing, you don't put it back in.
Supervisor weekly. Yeah.
We had nothing last week.
I had nothing last week, as well.
I got them last week. White week?
White week.
Yeah, um. Yeah, it's good. Okay. Um. Under Fekko is the fourteenth, right? Tuesday, the fourteenth, Jackie, it's eleven thirty. So next meeting? And then uh, we're gonna talk about caring starting next week.
Another, there's
We continue on next
Oh, wait.
Thirteen, thirteen.
Yeah.
That's Monday.
I lost a week in.
Yeah, next Monday, and then following Monday, so. All right. Nothing else needs to be on the agenda, uh So I told these guys, next three Mondays are pretty well out, so.
Fun, fun.
Enjoy this one.
Yes, everyone. Yes, here it is. All right, let's take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, all in favor, I?
All right.
Need is adjourned, thanks, everybody.